All right, there we go. All right, Mayor, Councilors, staff, thank you for having us this evening. So my name is Jeff Humphries. I'm a principal and architect with McKinsey. With me today is Kathy Bowman, our project manager for the project.
Jeff, is that...
Is it on?
Is that thing... yeah, there it is.
Yeah, I think it's on. Yep, I'll try to get a little closer, though.
There we go.
And then also, project architect Cyrus Beatles. So as you may know, we were recently hired by the city to help define your space needs for a number of different city facilities. And so if we advance to the next slide, I want to talk to you a little bit about McKinsey. So I lead our team of architects and engineers that focus on public facilities. These are a few that we've recently completed or have underway. So Kaiser City Hall close by, Lebanon Fire, they just got their bond measure passed, Albany Police was completed here two years ago, and right now under construction is Lake Oswego City Hall Police Project. There's just a number of them that we've actually done. I think we've completed more than 70 fire stations and 30 police facilities in the Pacific Northwest. So we're really excited about working with your community and working on your facility. We were tasked with looking at existing conditions, defining what the deficiencies were, defining what the space needs were, if that's adding on to the existing facilities and refurbishing them, or building a new facility, and looking at the combination of consolidating facilities. And then tonight Kathy and Cyrus are going to walk you through what our existing conditions findings were. So, okay, with that.
So I'll get us a little bit started, a little bit, and talk about the existing facilities that we were asked specifically to look at. So we were originally asked to look at the police station, the city hall, the public works and planning leased current space, as well as the public library, the community center that we're currently in, and the memorial pool. So those were the seven buildings that we actually took a look at. And when we are looking at existing facilities, there are several criterias that we're looking for. We're looking at what's the space availability for the future. Now, we're not looking just at 10 years or five years. We're looking at for 50 years or 30 years, for a long span, to look at what's your population growth. And we looked at PSU's population growth, and Stateon is projected to increase in population about 1% per year for the next 30 years. So that's a steady increase of people. And so how is the city going to be able to maintain their current relationship with the community, as well as our facilities? How is it going to be able to support the community? So those are one criteria that we looked at. The second one we look at is structural criteria. So how well is the building standing? In an event of an earthquake or a natural disaster, what's going to happen to this building? Is it just going to collapse, or is it going to allow the people to get out of the building? And then the third criteria we look at is the building and life safety. So code has changed over the years. At the current state, what is the status of meeting code requirements? And as well as jurisdictional requirements such as handicap accessibility, ramps, all of that. And then the last one we look at is your mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems, operations, and maintenance. How long is your system going to last? They do have a lifespan, so we look at these life cycle costs. At what point are you going to just have to start fixing these items, or actually just completely replacing them? So these are the four criterias that we are looking at big-picture-wise. And so we're going to dive in a little bit. We're going to start off with city hall. So as far as future growth, overall, the space of the current city hall is acceptable for your current needs. But when you look at your population growth and how your city hall needs are going to grow, there is really no room for you guys to grow. You're kind of landlocked in that downtown core. You can't move to the theater. I don't think your community is going to be very happy if you took that away from them. And you're also bound by another property on the other side. So there's really no room for growth in that aspect. Building and life safety-wise, there are some ADA compliant issues. So while there are some measures already there in place, there are still things that are still lacking, such as approaches to sinks, or counter heights, or thresholds differences. There's also a level of lack of security for staff and amenities for community use. It's unfortunate your city council chambers are not part of the city hall where they're all combined, so that's also another thought. Roof replacement will be required at some point. There are several issues with the roof itself. So those are things that we looked at. The structure itself, while it's doing all right, it will require some seismic upgrade. So in an event of an earthquake, we will want to upgrade that facility so that it can allow its inhabitants to safely get out of the building. Its mechanical, electrical, and plumbing system does not meet the energy code requirements of this time. It's losing efficiency, so it's almost at the end of its useful life. Generally, we see these equipments being... mechanical equipments be lasting about 15 years or so. We're getting right up to that point, and so you're going to have to start fixing all of these items or completely replacing these units. And so we've found most rooms are either hot or cold, so it requires space heaters. So you're now sucking in more power and different things. Most of the building systems, again, are really at the end of its useful life at the city hall. So Cyrus and I are going to kind of trade off and talk about each building. So I'll pass it on to Cyrus for the police station.
So with the height differences, I'll try to get down to the mic for everyone to go through.
Folks, when would you like to take questions on all this? At the end of each segment, or at the end of the presentation?
Your call. Probably the end of the presentation.
Fine, go ahead, Aron.
Okay. So the police station on the same block as city hall and the theater. So police is an interesting program. Their new station is required to be an essential facility in this day and age, which essentially means you're going to be able to be fully operational after any emergency event, be that an earthquake, wildfire, or anything of those natures. So right now, in the existing building, I'm skipping down a couple, but the structure of this current building does not meet the current requirements for an essential facility. So with that, there are options out there of seismically hardening this structure, but those are intensive remodels. Then additionally, future growth in the space, really, we're at a maximum capacity. If you've ever walked through the station itself, there's not quite enough room in the facility for things that the chief was mentioning earlier of gender-neutral or individually-sexed locker rooms, those sorts of facilities. Building and life safety, again, with an aging facility, it's lacking in ADA compliance in some areas. Again, as Kathy mentioned, there have been upgrades and modifications made over time, but it's not fully ADA compliant. Lacks adequate egress in some locations, as well as a big one that we became aware of onsite with an incident happening just days before. The security at the front vestibule, the main building lobby, and the reception doesn't meet current standards for protections there. So really, just that transaction window, bulletproof, bullet-resistant glazing on the street front is kind of what you would see in a modern facility. And similar to the city hall, the MEP systems, they are aging, going to need future replacement here in the coming decade at least likely. And with that, they're not meeting current energy codes, so you're not as efficient in your systems as you would be in a modern facility.
Just to add a little bit to that, we also took into the site consideration needs as well. So typically, for a lot of city facilities, you guys have city vehicles or patrol vehicles. Those are generally in a secure zone, whereas in both city hall and police, any city vehicle or any kind of those will not be secured, and so can be an issue of safety for not only your officers and your city employees possibly as well. Also, something else to note was, as an essential facility, you want to be operational when everything else shuts down in the building, so you want a backup generator that is fully operational. The backup generator at the police was found to be pretty old, will not be able to fully probably back up the police station in an event of emergency or last a long duration. It also can be tampered with. Right now, it's currently not really in the secure zone as well. So just something else sitting out there. The community center at EOC, so this building itself, we found that, you know, for this... we have a very large space here. It's adequately sized for the community that you're currently in now and the future. We're just probably looking more at just some of the dated finishes. We know there are some asbestos present in this building that will need to be evaded and mitigated if any remodels were to occur. And again, there's just kitchen equipment, plumbing, mechanical systems that are not fully functioning well, and it's at their end of its useful life. When we call EOC or Emergency Operations Center, you know, in an event of an emergency, it's the same category as a police station. We expect the building to withstand a seismic event or a natural disaster and remain operational. At this time, the structure itself will need to be hardened, like Cyrus mentioned, in the police facility, in order to meet that criteria, and that way you can operate as an Emergency Operations Center. I know previously at the community outreach meeting, we had a question about what is an Emergency Operations Center? This is basically where your city council members, your public officials running the city, fire department, police department, they use it as a command center, basically to run the city, call FEMA, get backup support from federal, get some money, or whether it's support. It's really the heart of when things go wrong, unfortunately, and so that you can service and approach all your community members and your citizens to protect them. That's that. Now, library.
So your lovely library, one of the newer facilities that we got to evaluate. It's fantastic, if you didn't already know that. So future growth definitely has quite adequate space for current needs, as well as future projected needs. There are, in the spaces, and kind of deeper where the public doesn't necessarily see on a daily basis, there are some minor flow and space issues as, you know, the design was... met the needs at the time it was constructed, and then as you move in, and as staff and things figure out how they really need to operate in the space. There's just some minor things that have... could use a little rework, a little remodel possibly. But as far as code and life safety, solid building and great condition. The structure as well is in good condition. Everything seemed quite up to par, and it's a good space. As well as the MEP system, still currently in a good functioning system, well within its serviceable life. It's not necessarily the most efficient system to use in that building, but it is operating as intended.
So following is the memorial pool. So while the pool itself is adequately sized, unfortunately, the supporting spaces, such as the locker rooms and some of the lobby areas, are definitely not adequate to support any more people coming into that area. So there's definitely need for room for growth. As far as building and life safety, there are a few concerns about safety. There's some slip-resistant floor issues in the locker rooms. It's just not a good enough grip where it will keep people from slipping and falling. It's non-ADA compliant. There are certain approach issues. I believe there are some improvements that have been made, but there could be more to accommodate. There are some dated finishes, of course, drainage issue. There seems to be some flooding issues in the pool, locker rooms area where it's just not draining properly, as well as it's also requiring a new roof. We've also noticed the structural system, because of the humidity of the pool itself, the moisture that it causes, has actually started to damage the wood beams in the main area. So there's that issue, as well as cracking in the CMU walls that will need to be repaired to structurally kind of harden that building as well. As far as MEP, there are some energy code issues. It does not... it would not meet the current energy code usage. All building systems are kind of at its end of useful life. There are... another thing with kind of code compliance is, there's kind of chemicals that are being stored with some things that shouldn't be stored together, and different things like that. So those are things that are... we looked at and took account as well. So, last one.
All right. Neighborhood planning and public works office across the street in actually a leased building across the street from city hall. So it not being a city-owned property, we did not evaluate the... as far as the structural system or the MEP systems, just because there's not necessarily that level of importance for reviewing those on their life cycle basis, since it's a leased facility. But as far as future growth, they, right now, are already at a maximum capacity. They lack space for their proper storage and use of their flat files, their large-scale drawings that they're reviewing and producing on a daily basis. And there's not a lot of option for reworking the space, and again, as a leased facility, to make that even a little bit better in the shorter interim. Building and life safety, so there are plenty of non-ADA compliant areas as far as the restrooms, the break rooms, and just generally through the circulation through the space. There's dated finishes and a lack of separation, or even any sort of security or delineation between publicly accessible spaces and actual staff spaces. So to get to some offices, you're walking through what would possibly be defined as a public lobby, or as an exchange area between the public and staff. And the public would have access throughout the remainder of the space with that.
So we took all of these things into account and started to put a priority list. So when you're looking at a master plan and order of importance or order of needs, we started prioritizing with the essential facilities first, so that you can respond to your citizens first. So high on the list, and number one would be the police or EOC. These are operationally important for your city to function. These are also the buildings that were requiring probably the most improvements as well, not only as a space needs, but also a structural need and mechanical, electrical, and plumbing needs. Next came along the city hall as well, just because of their need for space, and also getting public works and planning following that, their own space, getting out of maybe a leased space and finding a more central location where they're so close to city hall, maybe closer than just right across the street as well. The pool, although the building itself is probably by far, you know, has the most damage to it, it's not exactly an essential operations or facility needs for the city. It's kind of amenity, sorry. And so that's why it's lower on the list. As well as the community center, we understand this is still kind of a underutilized space, so just lowering that in the priority, as well as... The library, of course, is by far the newest building of all your facilities that we have evaluated, and therefore at the bottom of it. So that's kind of where we have ranked currently your facility needs, and how we feel that you guys should look to replacing and renovating, or looking at a combination facility. So the next steps for us is looking at a conceptual master planning. So now we've identified the deficiencies of all of these facilities. Now we take that information, we prioritize them. Now we're looking at, okay, are we going to be renovating each of these facilities? Or is it better to consider a new site for a brand-new building? And this brand-new building could be a combination of police, city hall, public works and planning, and maybe an EOC room or a community room. Those can be all combined. So the task force has identified two sites that they would like to look at. These are already city-owned properties, so it would not add to the cost. But we're looking at the Stateon Dog Park site. There are three different tax plots that could be combined to look at a combined facility of police, city hall, public works, and planning. And then also the community center site, or this site itself. There's plenty of land on this area, so how can we rearrange this site to possibly be a big campus of city facilities is something that we will also be taking a look at at this point. So while we're developing this conceptual site plans and master plan, our next public outreach meeting, and we would like to get public feedback on what we come up with as different renovations or new facility site diagrams, will be on March 25. And right after that public outreach meeting, we will present to city council some of the comments that we received from the public outreach meeting, as well as some of the design decisions that we have made. So with that, we'll be happy to take some questions.
Okay. Okay. Let's start with... thank you Kathy, and Jeff, and Cyrus. Let's start with some... way the agenda's set up, public comments. So Erin, you wanted to speak on this one. We'll get a bunch of council questions here in a little bit. Go ahead, please.
Karen Frickdell, 12326 Golf Lane, Southeast Sublimity, Oregon. I have two buildings that are directly right by each of those buildings. One is directly behind this building here, family-owned, and also my building that I'm working on right beside the police station. So very interested in seeing future planning, and I think that after talking with the police chief, I recognize some serious needs for secure parking, for facilities that support a secure environment for our police force. I think that that's very valid. I'm a concerned citizen in the sense that I don't want to see our downtown core being vacated and having a vacuum, so to speak. And so as part of RDS and the Economic Vitality Committee, I'm also looking at ways that we can bring new business in. But one thing that I thought would be a valid thing to think about as an idea is if the police went into a new facility into a secure... they had a secure lot and had great facilities, and then city hall could expand into the space vacated by the police department. And I think that that might be a really valid option without leaving the downtown core kind of vacant by all the city staff. And I know that fourth, going down just a little bit further, isn't that far away necessarily, but one thing, if the police station would move to a new facility, it would also allow some public parking in the area that's currently being taken by police vehicles. And I can remember growing up as a little boy and having the entire side of my building available for parking. And I know that as the police force grows, you just don't have that luxury of being able to leave those spots open for public use. But that would give us a small parking lot in our downtown core that I think would be very valuable, and something that would be used by the community. And we would still have city hall there where it's accessible by people, and admittedly, city staff are good customers as well, so it's good to not move them away from the core. And I think that that would be a very valuable thing to think about. But I support growth, and I think that... I definitely highly support the idea of the police station having a better facility. And I just think that that sort of an idea set might help with some of the concerns. And it would allow city hall to expand and to be able to retrofit and do some seismic upgrades and facility upgrades that they don't currently have.
Okay. Thank you, Erin. Other public comments on this presentation? And if not, we'll go to council questions. So who wants to start? Chris?
Yeah, just a quick question. So it seems to me, from a safety and security perspective, that having all of your... all of those essential functions co-located could be an issue, like all your eggs in one basket kind of a thing. Do you guys have any... have you received feedback on work that you've done in the past, or recommendations that you would make on what of those essential functions you would co-locate? Because it seems like the city hall, you'd want to have that separate from the police, you'd want to have the Emergency Operations Center separate, just in case.
So we can ask this a couple of different ways. We do have history, as you kind of saw in our first slides, Kaiser City Hall and police, Lake Oswego City Hall and police. We are seeing more and more city amenities coming together. There's actually... we've found that consolidating into one building, putting all your eggs in one basket, as you said, is actually a good use of space. You can actually start combining rooms and spaces together, so you're decreasing the size overall. For example, your Emergency Operations Center, you're only going to use as an emergency facility, but if you can use that also as a community center, a city council chambers, or a municipal court, you're saving that much on operations and maintenance, less maintenance on facilities, as well as also on... sorry, lost my mind for a minute. As well as overall space as well, usability, less square footage, and costs to the building. We're also finding that in an event of emergency, you're actually bringing all of all those... all of these people together. So having them at the same location has not been an issue, as far as I know, and Jeff Humphries can actually talk more about that as well, as he stands some combined facilities. But we are seeing the trend is to actually start combining them or have them in closer proximities. And we're also strategically locating them on the city so that they're away from, you know, rivers, or they're away from flood zones and different things like that, so that they're not... they're away from those major disaster areas or critical zones. I hope I answered that question for you.
Yes, you did. Thank you. One quick follow-up.
Sure. So since the library's in good shape, how about we take all the books, move them to the police station, move the police to the library? Yeah, Dave? Chief?
I'm not going to take that fight on. I'll...
I could comment on that. So libraries and police stations are built to a different risk category. So unfortunately, even if the police moved into the library, we would still have to renovate the facility to a higher risk category to withstand a seismic event. So we would still have to do some structural hardening. So unfortunately, you wouldn't get away with no renovations.
I love my library.
Yeah.
It shows. Yeah. Kathy, whoever wants to take this one. Is there any way to get an idea of how much or how little... how much of a seismic event any of these buildings would handle? These wooden buildings, I'm concerned about. This one, and the library, and the pool, I don't know. Will they take any kind of seismic event?
According to our structural engineer, we did everything we could to poke up every ceiling tile and wherever access we can get. We believe that you guys will be able to get out for some of these buildings, but because of the way these were built, we can't say for sure how much it's going to withstand, and that you might be able to get out, but certain areas might collapse more than others.
Life safety?
Right. Life safety-wise, that...
Continued use.
Yes. Continued use, yeah.
Has anyone else in here been in a real shaker?
Yes.
That's a real experience, isn't it?
Yes.
Just at Omsi.
You are absolutely helpless.
Your instinct tells you to run, and that's the worst thing you can do.
You can't move. It's a horrific experience. People say, "Oh, we might have an earthquake." "Oh, no, thank... not around here." Somebody else, please. Go ahead. Lots of neat questions here possible for these folks.
Mr. Ray.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much for the presentation. This is really great. I think that having this out to the public will, the way that it's presented, it makes it really clear for us to understand, we need new buildings. I'm a fan of them all going, coming together. I'm wondering in your past projects, how did those cities go about like getting community support funding, things like that, do they do levies or like, is it normal to take it to the voters? Like, that's the kind of stuff that I want to know.
Well, that's actually part of the study that we will be completing. So once we identify the needs and next steps and which path you want to go, we'll help you guys identify some of the grants that are available to the city and identify what your financial status is so that you can look at, okay, do we need to go out for a bond? Or is there a grant that you can apply for? There's also USDA loan. Those are just some examples that we have personally worked with, with different jurisdictions so that they can get funded for their new public safety facility or what civic building that they need. So, it is forthcoming and we do have some experience in identifying, getting you guys the funds you need. When you go out for a bond, we definitely can help you guys with the bond campaigning efforts. We always recommend transparency with your community, help them get involved. And so, we help you guys plan these public outreach meetings so strategically and often so that they can feel like they're part of the community. We want them to feel like this is their building, they're paying for these buildings, and so we want them to have a voice. And so, we encourage that you guys continue to have these public outreach meetings, continue to share at City Council meetings of what the goals are.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I understand you guys did on Wednesday an event, correct, for some public outreach. Did you have a lot of community members come and attend and give you guys anything useful?
We had approximately a dozen people, I believe, and we had some very good questions. There's, of course, there's a lot of jargon here of like, what's an EOC? How does the city function? And so we've answered a lot of, I believe, questions that, in regards to how the city functions. There wasn't any actual comments per se about, oh, I, I prefer this over that or anything like that, but it was a, a good awareness and letting the community aware of what's happening and why we're doing the study and the results of the study.
So kind of starting the conversation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Kathy, one of the comments that has come up in the presentation is, we have, with regard to Police Stations, we have to build them to more secure standards? In this happy place, people don't attack Police Stations. That only happens in other places. So, why not have lots of windows and open access? No, I, I know the answer, but I mean, it's, it's, it can see, to someone who hasn't thought about it at all, why would a Police Station have to be any different than any other public facility? But they do. Okay. I answered my own thought there, which is a good thing once in a while. Somebody else, come on.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have a question about, like, in your guys' past projects, what's like the, what have you guys noticed in the cost difference of like having to do individual buildings versus combining them all together? Because I mean, you want to get the most bang for your buck and, and I know as a taxpayer myself, I'm not going to want to pay for a whole bunch of buildings if it's way cheaper to put them all together and it's still safe and it makes sense.
Maybe Jeff can help me answer this one. I know we've done, there's pros and cons to both to consider, like there's phasing that you can consider.
I would love to hear all the pros and cons that you can think of.
Yeah, okay. So we'll let Jeff start first.
So there's, there's not a right answer to this, but there are a lot of efficiencies associated having fewer buildings, whether that's one or two versus five different buildings for these program elements. So, when we're designing the projects to meet essential facility requirements, they obviously have a higher premium because they're being built to a higher standard than a regular commercial structure. So that's something that could lead toward a, no, no, let's only do the Police and EOC as a essential facility, that'll be a standalone project. When we did the Kaiser City Hall Project, that's one building, there's a seismic joint that separates out the Police side from the City Hall side. That was a cost strategy, right? So the Police can remain operational, the EOC component can remain operational, city function, people will get out of the building, once the event's over with, they can come back in and figure out what needs to be done to the structure. The advantages of combining them also would be the space reduction. So, you know, you might have about a fifteen, ten to fifteen percent premium of what the structural requirements are for a essential facility over a commercial structure. That actually will come through for MEP systems because they have to be restrained to a higher level, those sorts of things. When you get to the point where you, well, you know what, let's go ahead and combine the facilities together, we're going to reduce our square footages. If we reduce the square footage, it doesn't matter what the cost per square foot is, you're still going to be benefiting a reduction in overall size of the facility, so that will reduce the cost of it. Your mechanical systems might be a combined mechanical system, so if they're not, you know, they're operating 24/7 for the Police side and they don't need to operate for the City Hall side, but it's one system. It's just that, they're just not pumping in air, cool air, warm air to the City Hall side. So your mechanical systems could potentially go down for a combined facility versus having separate buildings. Trying to think of other elements. We've done it both ways. I think there is a growing trend to actually have them combined for some of these reasons that I just mentioned. But a large portion of our projects, they have been separate facilities, just because overall, the overall size and scale of the project's going to generate a cost. And so sometimes it's, it's difficult to come up with a funding on that. And so it's, it's more of a, well, let's bite off what we can handle now and we'll deal with this other piece at a later time. Does that help a little bit?
Very much so, thank you.
I've got one more. Back to seismic things, that beautiful picture of that Kaiser City Hall and Police in your presentation there, that's built with those, some kind of heavy cement block, right? Whatever it's called, I, I don't know, but that is, the standard, Kathy, the standard on that, that'll take anything that nature can throw at it?
There are several reinforcements for the Emergency Operations Center. I believe that one had some steel structure inside of the masonry walls or just on the interior side. So there's a lot of reinforcements besides just the masonry on the exterior. So sometimes the exterior can function as a structural element, sometimes it's not. So there's different ways that we can approach a structural system.
But those buildings like that are literally built to take anything nature can throw at them, right?
We do the best we can, yes.
Fire, tornadoes, seismic events?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's good. All right, thank you. I guess I knew the answer to that too, but I just wanted to hear you folks reinforce it. Yeah, okay. Somebody else? Is that it?
Great, informative, it was great.
Guys do a great job.
Yeah, thank you for having me here.
Thank you.
It is what it is, okay. And thank you for being here this evening.